Six o'clock, I'll call the meeting to order and we'll pause for a moment of silent reflection. Judge, would you like to please in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks. Willie, would you like to lead us in a roll call?
Be glad to. Steve Denny here. Shane Davis here. Jerry Burmeister here. Brian Williams here. Welcome. Thank you. Rosa Scaggs.
Here. We have a forum. We typically, we go straight into clerk treasurers report and all those things, but with it being the end of the year, we have several distinguished service awards that we would like to give out. And we are very proud of our citizen leaders here in Pendleton. In fact, when we did State of South Madison County presentation with the Pendleton Chamber, my entire first slide is all about citizens being involved in the community and things that the town council and the town staff could not take credit for because they were led gracefully by our town people. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Denise and Carrie Craig. And they are going to lead us in some fun awards.
Thank you. Thanks for this opportunity. So when we call your name, we'll ask you just to come up here. Carrie will give you your certificate. And then if you'd like, I know the town councilmen and women would love to be able to shake your hand and thank you for all you do for Pendleton. So over the years, the town, including myself, have enjoyed witnessing upfront and even behind the scenes, great works within our community. Whether it was a beautification project, a special event, or just a good deed, just bettering the welfare of others. These acts of service are because remarkable people. So the byproduct of this stewardship, not only builds strong communities, we believe, it enhances quality of life and place, but they also serve as a positive example for others to follow. So although the town of Pendleton, as Rosa said, we have very many, many people in this community to thank for all of the great talent that they give, the time that they give to this town. But as we have celebrated this year for the Madison County bicentennial, we decided that we wanted to recognize those that were a part of those celebrations. So that being said, when your name is called in the different groups, come on up here and we would love to give you our token of appreciation. First of all, we would like to recognize Lisa Floyd and Craig Campbell. I'm sure you have seen her all over Pendleton this past year. She has orchestrated and has pulled several different volunteers on very many great beautification projects, including beautification of our depot parking lot, our crosswalks at Pendleton and Water Street, even a year ago, the Water Street Crosswalk as well. And then also the Large Flower Pot. She was the one that came up with that idea and made that happen. And between her and Craig devoted many hours of watering between the spring, summer, and the fall. So we cannot thank you enough for making our town beautiful. No, thank you. Second, we would like to recognize those that were involved with the traveling town hall window display. Those, that town display encouraged Craig community, which is not only important to our town, but the Madison County as a whole. And this envisioned and designed was created and orchestrated by Tammy Bowman, Samson Huncler, and Erin Anderson with the help of the Pendleton Heights Art Club. So we want to thank them. Be here tonight. We will make sure that we get that to her. And then Tammy Bowman. And Samson Huncler. This display was on display in September, October, and we feel very fortunate that we're the first. And then went on to La Pal and to other great communities. So thank you very much for making this a great project for our town. Thank you. We would like to recognize Kristy Kelly. And Kristy Kelly created, designed the Fall in Love mural, a Fall in Love with Pendleton mural that is on display at Falls Park. That project was a part and funded by the Bicentennial Committee. And she's just a very creative individual. We're lucky to have her a part of our community. So thank you for coming. Also unveiled the same night that we had our grand reopening of the new playground. So it was a pretty phenomenal evening and weekend. So it was great. Fourth, we have the Pendleton Porch Parties orchestrated by our amazing Amy Turner and her team that she pulled together for this event. This also is a Madison County Bicentennial project. It was a beautiful Sunday afternoon that we all got to come together. We got to visit public facilities and several different residential homes to learn about the history of those homes and those buildings, and then also just a fellowship to have refreshment. So it was a great event and we expect this to be a tradition going forward, right? So we want to thank Amy Turner. She could not be here with us tonight. We also would like to thank Marissa Skaggs, Town Council President. She's worked her tail off on this and really made all the pieces come together. So thank you very much, Marissa. Also, we would like to thank Scott Reske. Amy Turner said, make sure that you include him because he did. He allowed this event for our community and we couldn't thank him more. Next, we have Sandy Butler. She was one of kind of the pod type leaders in the group, I think, is what they called. And we also have Tammy Bowman. She likewise was kind of coordinator of her pod. Fletcher Owens, I don't know if I've seen him. Oh, yeah, back here. I did see it. Yeah, good. Yes, come on up here. Fletcher Owens was a big part of that event. Kathy Pascoe, I know she could not be here tonight. And I think that wraps up then the porch parties. I have one more on this, and then before I turn it over to Carrie Craig. Carrie Craig is our community development coordinator that is going to be recognizing the members of our placemaking committee. But this one was our, probably our biggest last bicentennial project that we had to the year. And the town of Pendleton took lead on this. It was a Madison County Bicentennial tree planting project. So for that project, we collectively, for the entire county, we were able to plant 200 trees in honor of the 200th anniversary. So it was a really cool project. It was a great way to be able to see all those communities coming together. Even as small as Restus and Summitville, everyone was included on this project and benefited from new trees. With that project, which was hosted by the Madison County Stormwater Quality Partnership, which the county of Pendleton is a partner within that group, and also the Anderson Rotary Club, that project, we knew we wanted a project logo. And so for the project logo, we just happened to, while the display was going up, ran into Samson Huncler and asked him if there was any possibility that some of his art students can help us create the logo for that project. He quickly put us in contact with Jeremy Carpenter. And he is the teacher of that class. It's the digital design class. There's about 15 of them. 11 of those students submitted logos. And those are right behind you, right here up here up front, you'll see. And if you look at them, and I even told them when we went and visited them in the classroom, when that first hit my desk and I saw it come across my screen, about jumped out of my seat because I could not believe these were designed by high school students. They're amazing. They're top-notch professional quality. They took care and time. They're enthusiastic about this project. And like we said, any one of them would have been chosen as that project logo if it was for a different project. There was reasons why Kennedy Quinn's logo was selected. And that was just because it really supported the stormwater partnership and kind of the purpose of that group. But any of those logos, I could see on a book, I could see on a brochure. These students are going to go far if they stay in that field. So we just really wanted to give kudos, a shout out to them, and also Jeremy for leading this group. I know that visiting and coming to a town council is probably not high on their priority list in high school, you know? But we do have with us Kennedy Quinn, and she is the, she was the one that had created the design that was selected for the project logo. So Kennedy, if you'd like to come in here, we'd like to give you your certificate here. And thank you again for making this project very extra special to be a part of. So if you would like to go down, I would give them. It's very important for young ones to know how important they impact our community at a young age. Thank you. Oh, and we also, and I do apologize, we need Jeremy Carpenter to come up here. We've got him. Work with. He really was responsive. And these, you could tell that these students really respect this teacher. So we told him that he is someone that they need to grow and aspire to be like. So thank you very much. All right, I'll turn it over to Carrie.
So the distinguished service award for Pendleton Placemaking Committee members is bestowed upon individuals who have demonstrated exceptional commitment, leadership, and innovation in the enhancement and revitalization of our community spaces and public assets. This prestigious accolade recognizes the outstanding contributions of recipients in fostering a sense of place, cultural vibrancy, and community engagement. And so I want to now provide these awards to Colette Cunningham, who's our chair. You're welcome. Maybe Brown?
Good to see you.
Congratulations.
Lisa Floyd. Okay, Amber Hudson. And I'm also going to give Amber her mother's award, Brenda Doltry. And Amber and Brenda and Melissa did a great job of decorating the trees for Main Street outside. So thank you. Helen Reske, who is not here. Dustin Tryon. Amy Turner. Mary Jo Kemper. And Sue Patton.
Thank you very much for all you do for Pendleton. We appreciate your time and your commitment and your hard work in making Pendleton a better place to live. Thank you.
Yes, thank you so much. And we have one more distinguished service award recipients. And for those of you who don't follow local Pendleton politics, this is Shane Davis's last council meeting after four years, six years on the town council. So with that, we're going to give you this plaque and hope that you don't, you don't become a stranger, that you still hang out with us and come to these meetings and enjoy them. So thank you for all your, yeah, from that side, yes. So thank you for your six years of service. And then one other unusual or not typical pieces of the evening today. I met Sergeant Carvalho from the Air Force, and so he wanted to come in tonight. And so here, I'm going to turn it over to him.
Hello, everybody. My name is Sergeant Carvalho. I'm actually a recent, I just moved here this year to Pendleton. And I have to say, this city is special. And I'm very honored to be here today, and I think it's very momentous that you guys are all celebrating your achievements this year. But with that being said, I got one more for you guys. So this is a certificate of appreciation from the U.S. Air Force and Space Force. I'm a U.S. Air Force and Space Force recruiter in the area. I'm brand new. So if you see me around, please stop me and say hello. I'd love to get to know all of you guys. This is for you guys, the town council.
Thanks so much.
Absolutely. You guys are doing great.
Thank you.
Thank you for your service.
Mind if I take a picture real quick? Oh, no, that's fine.
Okay, he sees Shane. Okay, ready?
Awesome. Thank you so much. Yes, welcome to Pendleton.
Appreciate that.
And while we're on the topic of armed services, I would like to implore everyone to come out Saturday morning at 9:00 a.m. for wreaths across America, Grove Lawn Cemetery, sponsored by the Dollars for the American Revolution. We're going to place approximately 200 wreaths on veterans' graves at Grove Lawn. Everyone's invited. And if you show up, we may put you to work placing some wreaths. But it's going to be a wonderful, remarkable morning at Grove Lawn. So Saturday morning, 9:00 a.m., would love to see everyone there. Okay, so thank you, everybody who came out tonight. If you would like to leave, you're more than welcome to. If you'd like to stay, we'd love to have you. So it's on your own time. You can figure out what you want to do. And so with that, we will go into. Just everyone else. Thank you all. And so with that, we will shift gears into our typical business and move into approval of minutes from the prior meetings. We have two minutes to approve the one from November 9th, as well as the special meeting that was on November 27th. And so any questions, comments, concerns, changes to those? If there aren't any changes, I'll entertain a motion for approval.
Make a motion to approve?
I have a motion for approval. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second for approval of the minutes from the prior meetings, November 9th to November 27th. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion to adjourn unanimously. Okay, with that, we will turn it over to Willie for the clerk treasurers report.
Well, I was thinking, since it's Brian's first night, we've got the voucher here. Everyone's got a copy of it, and there's 240, some items on there. I thought we'd go through each one.
That's what I was hoping for.
Now, you'll see that. You'll also see the month ending report for general fund, which is in good shape in May 398. So that's it. I don't have any plaques or anything pass out, so. Any questions?
Questions, comments, concerns for Willie? There aren't any. I will entertain a motion for approval of the claims for the month of November.
So move. Second.
I have a motion and a second for the claims from November. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion to adjourn unanimously. Okay, turn it over to department reports, and we will start with Chief R.
Good evening. And you owe Jacob thanks because I tried to make a screensaver for your iPad and he wouldn't let me.
I'm glad. I can only imagine.
Let's see, Pendleton Police Department for November. We're currently in the mode of upfitting the squad cars. Shane stopped by today and was able to see what it looks like to do that. Literally, they explode the car and then put it back together. So I think that was eye-opening for him to see it, but he then works on the line, so he knows that. It's interesting to see a brand-new car laid out in the garage in pieces. So we're getting that Christmas in Pendleton parade went great, great turnout. I've still got a snowball in my car. I found it the other day. Somebody zinged one in the window.
That's accuracy.
Yeah. Everybody at the department's completed their yearly mandates for the academy and our training. So everybody's got their hours and more, so that was all good. Prosecutor law enforcement awards for the year, Officer Jerry Branson received an honorable mention for his DUI activity. He also received the award through the state, through the Criminal Justice Institute. I think it was 72 DUIs. If you ever get a chance and you want to ride with Jerry, it's interesting. So he's real good at it. And then on the 29th, myself and a bunch of people from the town all attended an eclipse meeting up at the emergency management office. Since that time, I've met with all the trucking companies here in town. They were not aware of any of that. And when I explained why they needed to be, they were very receptive of it. So we may, they may reach out. I don't know how much they need from us. But I mean, they're planning as far as even their logistics for that day, maybe not even shipping that day. I explained to them, if they have a driver that says, I can get to the next gas station. One thing they told us in the eclipse in 2017, 2017, was that a four-hour trip turned into a 10-hour trip. And so if you can just stay home that day, please stay home that day.
Want to remind me of that?
It is April 8th, 2024. It's first, yeah, it's for three, seven minutes, but it causes chaos everywhere else in the world, so. The one thing, I'll go through the numbers real quick. For the month, 1,112 different dispatch calls, 25 crash investigations, 44 criminal adult arrests, two juveniles, two local ordinance warnings, one ordinance citation, 38 code warnings, and 40 code citations. So 44 adult criminal arrests last month. And I told a person that sent me an email today that I would bring it up tonight. I know you met with the school about East Street. One concern from this parent, and I've seen it myself, is U-turns. But in Indiana, U-turns are legal unless they're on a upside or downside of the hill, blocking the view, and blah, blah, blah. So the only way we can make it illegal is if we make it an ordinance and post signs. And I think down there, there's just enough activity going on that people don't need to be doing U-turns. I'm not opposed to that at all. And that might help just keep things moving smooth. And that is it.
Any questions for Chief? Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you.
Next up, we have the final report from the court. And we've said this whole time, this is the last meeting with George serving as town judge. And so we have a plaque here for you. And thank you so much for nearly 20 years of service to this town.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Since it is my last time, I thought I'd drag this out as long as possible.
More than welcome to.
Some of the veterans would even faze you at all, I know. I would like to do, we started in 2004, and give you a weekly or monthly report of what happened during that until 2023. Worth it. So if we could, you're going to see on your screen and in front of you some information. And I'm not going to dwell on each one of those, just going to get some highlight what we actually were looking for over the period of years. The operational facility of the court started on 1/1/2004. And the driving force was mentioned in the original ordinance, the fact it had a local convenience for area defendants. More or less, what happened here stays here. It was said, avoid backlog of cases placed in other courts. Also to prevent continues to ensure no delay resolution. There was a game that plays at times that you may have an offense, and then maybe six months, maybe eight months, maybe 10 months later on, it would finally be resolved. It's legal. There's no question about it. It raises things off a lot of different people. When the court started, we had gone to several different courts through the entire state, looking at what we considered to be the best breed to see what we could find out. One of the things we wanted to do was have an efficient court. Well, that means a lot of different things, a lot of different people. We wanted to know the administrators, the people, the people we're going to see on a daily basis, had to be courteous, kind, helpful, friendly, all the way through the line in order to be able to get the job done. Personnel I have had have been blessed with in the fact that personnel handles emails, phone messages, on a timely basis. Much less, you can understand that some people are too satisfied, are pleased with having a good court. They let it know, and you happen to be in their own position answering the phone, you'll hear, you'll hear about it. When we started this, town court handled misdemeanors, which was DUIs as well as infractions, ordinance violations. During 2014, we shifted, changed the direction, and actually only addressed infractions and ordinance violations. This reduced the court staff, reduced my salary, and also gave our Pendleton Police Department a new headquarters in the court's old location. I want to cover several nets and bolts that you'll never see, never hear it again, in the fact that it was something that's always taken behind the scene. I want to be able to thank the fact that chemistry that Scott needed of intact was here at that particular time. And whatever we could dream up, talk about what had to be done, Scott could help us line it out. What could we do? Who could do it? How will it function? We started out with a common bond schedule, in the fact that if you were arrested here in Pendleton, or if you went up to Alexandria, do not expect the same bond situation. But we corrected that, the fact that everybody pretty well played out of the same hymn book. We had probation cooperation. We actually had probation officer here on. She was here faithfully. We gave her position, a room, and she did her job. This is again for people who were basically convicted and had a contract they had to make with the, excuse me, with the probation department. This may sound adequate, but it was the truth that we started with a video system much before the Zoom system, and this was to deal with Madison County Jail. We were enabled to be able to have hearings via the internet, whatever you would call it, video during that time. This helped us directly in the fact that we go ahead and have things, make sure that we're handling on a particular schedule. We have to have, a defendant has to be charged and has to have a hearing with such and such hours. Normally, if that happened, we would have to send an officer up to Madison County Jail where the person was incarcerated, bring him back, have the conference. They would give their excuse me, guilty or not guilty plea, go back and we would send, set up a trial. In the fact that with this, we were doing one full sweep, full sweep, in the fact that what came before us, we could get the determination as they, guilty or not guilty, and actually set a time for that. Minimize the officer's time in the fact that they didn't go up, run up there and come back and forth all the time. We were one of the few in Madison County that worked with the Odyssey system, which is a fully integrated case and financial management system that the state had set up. I was surprised when I first started this. In fact, there wasn't a commonality between all the different courts. This has a tool that works very, very well now and generates a lot of information for planning. There was also probable cause, which we work with the officers here, even for reporting for Madison County Law Enforcement. We also worked on an incarceration timeline to ensure hearings are done in appropriate hours and time hours. And sometimes, some things would happen, in the fact the defendants would not be brought out when necessary or released when necessary. This program made sure, ensured that this would be taken care of, that there would be more or less a red light, warning light, the fact this person had to be taken care of immediately. Only 10 more pages. Hang on. With all this being said, with the town court, the most fun I had was basically with community outreach programs. And that had to start with a DUI-based victims impact group. And what would happen is the fact that if you were nailed for DUI, you had part of your probation that you'd have to attend the Victims Impact Program. That would simply mean for you to sit here and listen to somebody tell you several of their life stories of what happened when they break and drove, drink and drive, or under the influence, period. Some people that you would never expect be in situations like this, alternating, altered their lifestyle completely. They did took prison time at times, but other ones too, lived with this, lived with this over a period of time because they weren't often simple accidents. Because they weren't often simple accidents, they were fatalities. So we had people come, and we had the people that were in the probation program have to listen to these people. And these people were very, very, I want to say impactful. If you were listening, listening to them, it was hard to miss as far as intensity and the feelings that would try to get across to you at that time. We also had a program called Every Fifteen Minutes, and this was role play, playing. In fact, we got a lot of players involved in it. We had the students, we had the fire and ambulance, and the police personnel all here, along with some mock parents. We would set up a crash scene out at the high school and walk through, we'd have the students come out, surround the vehicle, and simulate a severe accident. And everybody would do their job. Our department would come in, secure the scene, if there had to be execution, they had to take care of. The medics were there, the police were taking care of all the security for us too. We also had mock parents there that more or less walked up the scene and started screaming, that's my child. Which just enhanced the whole aura and environment of what actually was going on. It's always easy, done this, sit there and pat yourself on the back, say, well, this is a great exercise, we did good. And you say, okay, did we really? But then you'd hear the kids say, did you see that? The comments that they made more or less validated the idea, they didn't want any part of it anymore. So that was a nice thing to see. We did have court visits and also school visits for all ages. We actually, one time when we were on the hill, we had a steel cage jail set up along with a funeral casket. In the fact, more or less, there was discussion, someone said, well, what do you get that for? What's in it for? Well, that's jail process, that's a part of a jail cell. Oh, what's with this casket work routine? So, well, you made the wrong decisions. You have a potential to increase your chance of being in the casket much sooner than you planned. I was also involved in the City Town Court Judges Association as Vice President, which was definitely interesting. And we look back on two thousand four to two thousand twenty-three, Pendleton Town Court adjudicated a total eighty-seven thousand one hundred and ninety-five cases during that period of time. Now, is that high or low? Was irrelevant to us, in the fact it was interesting to see what we actually had done with our track record. But depended awful, awful lot on people out there, the pavement, the officers, and what they were doing too. Now, with that, some people ask me, you know, with all my history, what did I learn being a judge? Let's go ahead and start, karma is real, you get what you give. It was always interesting that have people said they couldn't believe it happened to them, and then they, the light came on and said, oh, yeah, I guess I understand it now. In fact, they would be associated with something they knew would be in trouble. Being courteous, being helpful was something we strived to do. Saying please and thank you. Again, understand this, please, this is one man's view of what I learned during this time. Not that I just didn't know it, maybe the fact I didn't use it enough. But saying please and thank you makes simple things a lot easier. Being respectful to those around you. Simple, simple things that you think, duh, well, again, drinking, alcohol, driving is self-disruptive, period. No disguise. Using pleasure drugs is self-disruptive. Marrying a seatbelt is good. Bullying of others is tragic. And people think, well, it doesn't really happen. It does. Major thing we've seen on a daily basis, if you want to turn the TV on, are guns. Guns are not toys. They're basically, the best weapons need to be controlled. And sometimes you just wonder how a fifteen-year-old and thirteen-year-old get a hold of a gun and cause the problems that they are. Saying the dog moments, meaning, duh, I don't get myself in situations like that. We all have choices and consequences. And I ask you, when you have to make a choice, ask yourself, would I like it if someone else did that to me? If you can basically say, yes, I think I need to go to jail, or no, I don't think I do, or yeah, I should have been thinking about that ahead of time. Or before you make that decision, becomes a consequence, is what I'm asking you to do. Now, we're all adults, in the fact we're talking about this too. But when we talk to the kids about this, we went back to Golden Rule a little bit, someone picked up on that, but they all picture it easy. If you beat on somebody, you may get beat on by somebody else. In the fact, I don't want to call that person a name because I don't want to be called a name. The children are sponges. After we had some of the situations that we had with them and talked to them, they'd come up and share freely. And sometimes shockingly, as long as it's something they were involved in or what had happened, and they would say, well, I'm not, I'm not gonna do that yet. I believe it's really strong. It's the strong feelings that the youth is where we have to start if we're gonna change some pictures. It's always good to say, well, mom and dad will do it. Well, we may have more of mom and dad to make sure they understand too that drinking and driving, using and driving aren't good things. So with that, you have any questions? I'll run it on. The one was going twice. I'm sure you want to hear some more. I will thank everybody sits on the front row up there, but also there's a lot of people that have helped the court through the years. Numerous people. I've always been treated well. When I ask something, well, we can do it for you now, not can't do that now, but we will get to it. It's been a very, very I want, it's not an easy ride, but again, it's been a lot better than some of the other, other judges that I've talked to, and some of the hostile situations they faced, and trying to get something done on time or get someone's cooperation. That was, wasn't a problem here at all. You asked, you got. So again, my hat's off to you all. You've got a basically a big world coming down the path. And what I keep on seeing, building after building, house after house. Problems will be there, and I guess I'm hoping and depending on you all. Take care of it. And I thank you very much. And she is now taking applications for someone to work on outside.
Now that George is no longer the judge, we can put him in all sorts of other committees. Thank you, Judge. Now we'll move on to the park report.
Good evening. Just a quick reminder, and then I'll take questions from anybody but Brian. Luminaries will be back Christmas Eve, so tell everybody to come check out the park. The lights look great. Friends of Falls Park have done a great job with that, once again. So any questions for me?
Brian, I'd like you to tell him right up front, nobody, okay?
We got a new snow.
We got a new snow, a new frosty. But we're waiting until closer to time in case.
He's up now.
Okay, well, the time has arrived.
The time has arrived for frosty too.
Anything else for Aaron? Planning report?
Planning is, uh, did you, if they have any questions on that, Denise is here on here.
No, I'm on Zoom.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
Is there anything you would like to highlight out of your report?
Um, well, I, I can't remember if I had mentioned this last month, but Carrie applied for the Food and Beverage Tax Grant Program. We typically use this for historic facade rehabs. We are asking for another two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So we should hear from them about the end of January. So the HPC will be the liaison for those monies to start another round of facade improvements. That's really kind of the only thing I've got. We have a couple amendments on the agenda tonight for you guys. And then we have one petition of rezone that was continued at the December meeting to January.
And that meeting.
Other than that, any questions?
Is the January third is the?
Yeah, January third.
Any other questions for Hannah? Thanks, Hannah.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, Scott.
You go ahead and scroll that first picture. Yep, thank you. Okay, so the first thing I was gonna bring up is that we completed a, just before the winter hits truly, pedestrian safety blitz on East Street, as the chief mentioned. And then downtown, we started all of a sudden having several incidents. Thankfully, nobody has been hurt, but several people were getting, cars were stopping just in time and tapping them or knocking them over. Like I said, no injuries. So we contracted with Steve Will's company to come down and do some painting. The right picture is before, this is right downtown, right here. And then the left is just after it, and you could see how much the starkness, the difference of just painting the pedestrians, pedestrian crossings. We also did it down, down this way, and then in East Street, we freshened up the paint and the crossings there. Talked to the principal, Ms. Hagman, and she is definitely seeing a difference in the behavior of traffic. So we hope that that's continues to be true. There's some other things we're gonna do, but this was something we felt we could do down in Derry real quick. Because we were noticing, like I said earlier, the increase in near misses. The other thing is, the guys did a great job with the leaf pickup. Weather was in our favor, was pretty dry. When it's dry, it's easy for them to go through and pick up the leaves. And so that was very successful. The other thing is, you can go to that next photo. Yeah, so I've mentioned it a little bit, but I haven't put a lot of emphasis. You'll probably, you're gonna start to see this, especially in your utility bill, is the EPA. And IDAM from the state has, there's an ordinance, a federal ordinance out there that utilities, water utilities have to identify to check for lead lines, lines made of lead from the meter pit to the house, and if there's a meter inside the house, we actually try to identify inside the house. So the way this is gonna be done is, we're gonna do a non-inspection screening. So it's basic, basically by elimination. So after a certain year in the eighties, we know homes weren't built with lead anymore in their water pipes. So we're gonna go through with the help of Commonwealth, identify those areas of town where the homes are too young to actually have this type of situation. Then, in the next utility billing, they're gonna get a flyer, and it'll be a front and back on the one on the left. I don't have a backup here. And then also a letter that explains what we're doing. We're asking them and showing, teaching them how to look at their pipes and tell whether they're lead, PVC, galvanized steel. There's reference to some videos that if they want to go to YouTube, they can look at how to do that. If they have any questions, we're gonna have a dedicated phone line that's identified on that. They can call in and we'll set up an appointment, and our guys will actually go and look at their house. Somebody says, there's no way, you know, eighty-nine, I haven't been down in my basement in ten years. Can somebody come and look at this for me? So our guys will, will do that and help them out if they just have a question. So if they don't feel comfortable or confused, we'll go send, we'll send a two-man team to go and look at what they have. Generally, the program is, if we think we, if we positively identify a house in a certain neighborhood, then that whole neighborhood will get earmarked as a possible, the other homes was possibly being led. So anyway, you're gonna see this in the next billing, and I just wanted to get a little bit more into detail about what we're gonna see. Is there anything else we should add about that?
There's also resources online that will land in page on our town hall or town website that can direct you to some links, like with the videos and that sort of thing. If you're, if you find yourself on there, there's.
Denise has worked really hard on this, along with Brian and Tracy, to try and get this communication right. So you already mentioned the receremony on Saturday. I want to mention Kyle Dishman, he had a real nice thank you letter today. I've already given this to Karen. He went out at two in the morning, somebody was having an electrical problem. Even though it was two in the morning, and it was even obvious, I remember when the, the page came in, it was obviously it was something internal to his house, nothing that we had done. It was with this circuit breaker inside the house, which is, as you know, not, once it's past the meter, that's not our issue. But Kyle stuck with them and made sure the house was safe and, and all that. And the guy, the guy who wrote the thank you letter was very appreciative. The other thing, the, if you don't know, the PBA, Punt Business Association is now the Pendleton Chamber of Commerce. And as you know, under contract, our economic, our community development director is the, by contract, the executive director of that. So that's a switch here. You're gonna start to hear more of that. Start to see, if you wonder what happened to PBA, they've changed their name. And then Chief, he doesn't, well, he, he sort of has volunteered back to the eclipse issue. So the, the way we're gonna structure that is, is the chief has sort of taken the lead, and then the other town departments will be in support of how that happens. And basically, the scenario is everything just shuts down, massive traffic jam. And then, so it's up to Chief and Lucas to figure out what's gonna be our critical point. We're, just so you know, we're letting them look at what's gonna happen first, and then the rest of the town departments will be in support of it. At first, when you hear it, you're sort of like, eclipse, you know, how bad could it be? Well, right, Tennessee was it? Yeah, they had it, and it was a a big issue because everything shuts down. Our school corporation's gonna be shut down for that day, just so you know.
It's even, I mean, unless there's a.
Yeah, yep.
First out, unless there's a city.
How many people do they say are gonna follow this? Yes, that's what amazes me.
Six hundred thousand. It's equal to seventy-one NFL games being released at one time. There's two million followers on Facebook page. There's fifty-four DNR properties within the capital totality, which is what Pendleton is in, that have been booked camping cabins, tents for three years.
With a two-night minimum.
With a two-night minimum. The DNR thought they do have to make money, and then realized the trouble that it's gonna cause. And they're hoping people stay two nights, but odds are because it's a work week.
We'll just eat that extra night.
And so Massa County EMA thinks that Pendleton's gonna be hit the hardest. One reason is because of I sixty-nine and the fact that nine and one oh nine connect seventy, seventy parallels, the perfect track. This, we'll have, I think I put flyers in your mailbox about this. So the perfect track is Bloomington to Muncie, so that's how close we are. So as we get closer and the chief comes up with a plan, we'll talk about it more.
Thanks. Any questions for Scott? Great. With that, we'll turn it over to Denise for the urban forestry annual report. We all have this on hard copy up here at the desk.
Yes. So on behalf of the Pendleton Urban Forestry Committee, we wish to present our annual report as committed through ordinance to the town council body. Urban forestry, we all understand that the presence and the care and the maintenance thereof is very critical to the vibrant, thriving, and sustainable community. But trees also provide numerous benefits to us and to our environment, and probably one of our favorites. I have one of our members here of the committee, Jeanette Isbell, why one of our favorites is that it enhances quality of life. So I first want to start out by thanking the members that serve on this community or on this committee. We have Carol Hannah, she is our president. Joe Scott is our vice president. Carrie Dodd is our secretary. We have Jeanette Isbell that is here with us, and I also want to make note that she has been a member of this committee since it was established in the, I think, early nineties or something. So it means a lot for us to have her on our board. And then we also have member Julie Paving that served on this board. It has been a pure joy working and learning with these ladies this past year. They have not only put in a lot of hard work to help educate the public and to serve in the resource and urban forestry for not only our community, but also the county as a whole, but as well as made priority a level of care and health and also growing our tree canopy. Twenty twenty-three, it's been a. Twenty twenty-three, it's been a good building year for our committee. The committee has been very busy, productive, as well as we've had a lot of fun together, doing a lot of, uh, really fun projects this year. So before you is the complete annual report, um, but we just will go through it and kind of quickly hit some highlights that we want to share with you. First of all, the, uh, for thirteen years now, our community has been named and recognized as a Tree City USA community. That is something to be very, very proud of. There's a lot of large cities within our state that don't, can't say that they held that acknowledgement and recognition for thirteen years. So. Uh, we're looking forward to being that again for our fourteenth year next year. Also, educating ourselves and others is a huge priority. So this year, myself and three others within the committee. Were able to be certified as a tree steward from the Indiana DNR. Uh, we took a two-day workshop that was pretty intense up in Richmond about a month ago. So, um, so we're really, um, very thankful that we were able to be a part of that. Uh, on your screen and in your packet are a few images. If you want to scroll down, uh, Karen, uh, from some of the past projects this last year. So the first one on the top left is the Arbor Day Outreach Fair that the urban forestry took part of, along with the Madison County Stormwater Quality Partnership and the Anderson City Parks and Recreation. That was in the springtime. The picture to the right is an Arbor Day celebration with the fourth graders in Pendleton Elementary. Marissa Sacks was there with us as well as Carol Hannah. And on that day, this has been a tradition for about three, four years now. We plant a new tree around the playground within the school. And so that tree kind of represents those fourth graders tree that will grow along with them, um, as they, uh, go through school. That day, we teach them the history of Arbor Day and the importance, uh, and the benefits of trees. So that is a tradition that we look forward to every year. We do it in the fall just because it's a great timing. For planting a tree and not needing that supplemental tree watering throughout the, the summer heat. And then the bottom left is our Madison County Vicentino tree planting project that we talked about earlier, where we planted two hundred trees collectively across the county. Our urban forestry was huge partner and a big help to that, uh, stormwater partnership. In planning and organizing and distributing those trees out. Then the fourth is an image of one of our posts that we have here. Uh, Carol Hannah came up the great idea about a year and a half ago about having an urban forestry Facebook page to be able to educate. Drive resources and to be able to, uh, teach, uh, tree care benefits and, um, and care, uh, tips, they have to our community. So right now we are about. I think we have about a hundred and ten followers. So we're looking forward to building that, uh, here this next year. In addition, so back kind of to the report, uh, we wanted to just share with you about one of our tree care management efforts in twenty twenty-three. We've had for the last three years, a inventory software, which is called Treekeeper. It's accessible on our town website. It's an interactive map that shows. The species, the diameter, the condition of the tree, the benefits that tree provides, a collective value of benefits that all of our trees, which we have a little bit over twenty-eight hundred trees. And those are public trees. So that's trees that you'll see in the street right away, the parks, um. Aaron and his crew do a huge part in providing new trees and caring for, um, our trees is. Even our biggest tree is our sycamore tree that is in our park. So, um, that is the Falls Park proper sports complex, the. Golf course and Browns Pool, and then also cemetery. So we have a lot of trees that we care for. But we, what we are very excited about is we just started a five-year rotating assessment program. So every five years, every tree, every public tree in our inventory will be evaluated by a certified partner. This year, we had, uh, Tanya Dotson from Plant Growth Management. She inspected eight hundred and fifty trees this year. And that was pretty much just from the summer until the fall. What she looks at is how those, how that tree grows, how it may be in conflict with our utility lines. Uh, also takes a look at the conditions, or maybe it needs to have some pruning, attention, um, health issues and so forth. And, um, in that assessment, all that information and data gets inputted into our tree keeper, uh, software. So I feel really, really good that we have an efficient, effective working system now with our tree care. Uh, within our urban forestry. This year, between all departmental works, grants, contracts, and I just, uh, want to stress again, it's not just the town, but it's also with the park and their, uh, investment as well. In tree maintenance, plantings and projects, we have provided a hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars in, uh, urban forestry focused work this year. Um, so we're very, very thankful of that. Um, as twenty twenty-four goals, there's one that, uh, we are very excited about, and we want to kind of give you a little bit of a heads up on this. Um, in twenty twenty-four, we're gonna be working closely with the Pendleton Elementary Crew with the fifth grade class. And so we're going to help them with a Arbor Day poster contest that is statewide through the Indiana DNR. So we're gonna assist them through that. And what will happen is we'll go through a process that we're gonna create beginning of twenty twenty-four. Uh, we've got to have it submitted by March of twenty twenty-four, and it'll be one final submittal of a poster that will talk about how oak trees are superheroes. So we're gonna go through that process, but what we want to have come out of that is we want it to be kind of the stepping stones in building. A relationship with the school systems to be able to have a tree city campus community. And what that means is, is that we would have, uh, curriculum and hands-on experience that we will provide to all of our elementaries, as well as our middle school and high school, like say in a science class and so forth. Uh, we will be able to provide tree education to our high school students. So they understand the importance at an early age, just like, uh, Judge Graham had talked about understanding things, uh, within the judicial system. So we're looking really forward to that. Uh, we're looking into grant opportunities with the state of Indiana. Carrie Dodge, she also serves on the urban forestry, and myself are gonna be serving on a selective committee through the first round. Uh, the next round comes open in July, so we're looking forward to learning about those processes and seeing how we can tap into those funds as well. Um, and then the last section there, uh, too many to mention, but, uh, these are individuals, organizations, groups, um, so forth, that have helped us along the way and been very supportive of our work this past year. And we just wanted to give them, uh, some recognition and thanks for that. So. Any questions?
Thanks so much. And. This is the map of.
That is just kind of a PDF format of our inventory. That is entire jurisdiction of the town of Pendleton. And you'll see where the little bullet points are. Um, some will, uh, reflect an active tree, some are vacant spots, um, a new tree. So, yeah, so. Get on the line and check it out. It's pretty cool.
Awesome. Thank you, Denise. And thank you, Jeanette, for serving on urban forestry for all of these years. It's an important committee. Um, next up ordinance twenty-three forty, amending the UDO.
Hannah, are you still online?
Yeah. Yeah. So this is, um, uh, just a couple ordinance, uh, updates for the UDO. Some items include some definitions. Um, we updated some landscaping terms as well as some architecture terms.
Hannah, do you happen to be in the driver now? Cause they just took off our spreadsheet of all those amendments, or it's not there now anyway.
No, I am not, but I can get on there really quick.
Oh, it's okay. It's just our spreadsheet that usually is attached to this ordinance is no longer there, which is unusual. So. It's okay. Not a big deal. Oh, that would be.
I'm sorry.
It's okay. It's okay.
Yeah, I have a hard copy.
It's okay. Most of these are regarding landscaping. There's some verbiage about, um, campground, right, Hannah?
Yeah.
But all of these have been through planning commission, um, as their first read, they were approved. And so now it comes to us for secondary. So any questions for Hannah regarding these? If there aren't any questions, I'll entertain a motion for approval.
So move.
I have a motion. Do I have a second for approval?
Second.
I have a motion and a second for approval of twenty-three forty, amending the UDO. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Okay, the party drain agreement. I'll let you talk about this, Scott.
Yes, all I need, um, tonight is just a, um, a verbal resolution. Allowing me to sign a contract when it's completed with, um, CSX. As you know, we've had to reconstruct the McCarty drain, um, creating some flooding issues. And we like, we're lucky enough to get, um, a state grant for that. And we did phase one, which when you do a drainage project, you always start bottom, the low end and work your way up. We completed that first phase and then, uh, which is really. Really approved, uh, the situation, especially in country farms. We're starting to get some basements flooded there. Uh, but anyway, the next phase will be to take that line underneath, uh. CSX railroad, the double line that goes through and under State Road sixty-seven and, um. Jeff and I were talking, it's very unusual. Usually there's a CSX, the railroads always have these forms you sign when you do something like this. They want us to draw the contract. With them. And so, um, we want to get that done as soon as we can. And, um, I don't want to have to wait till the next town council meeting to get that. It's, it's a simple thing. We've already paid the fee. They've already cashed the check. It was eighty-five hundred dollars. But now we've got to get the, the agreement, um, in place. Jeff, did you have anything to add?
No, I think.
Okay, so we seem to authorize you to enter into this agreement once it is.
Right, subject to town attorney approval.
So the motion to allow Scott to do that?
Yes.
I make a motion to allow Scott to, uh, handle the CSX contract. Second.
I have a motion and a second for authorization of Scott Reski to handle the McCarty drain agreement. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Um, finally, we have a vacancy on our Board of Zoning Appeals. Jamila Zafar has, um, vacated her position. And so we need to make an appointment to, um, the Board of Zoning Appeals. We recently had our forest commissions open house. And we have a, an applicant, Bob Jones, who, um, I would entertain a nomination for at this point.
This term expires the end of this year, and then you can, the council can reappoint or put somebody else in next year for a full four year term.
Yes, but the BCA is meeting December nineteenth, so it's of utmost importance that we have a full slate of folks there that night. Yeah, he's, he's very new to that. After laying out for a year, he's decided to come back to the fold.
I'm making a motion to.
Go ahead.
To appoint, uh, Bob Jones.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second for?
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second for appointing Bob Jones to the Board of Zoning Appeals. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That wraps up new business. Any public comment? Anyone online that would like to raise their hand? Any comments from anyone up here? With that, I will adjourn at seven oh three. Thank you all very much for coming.